Good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon. We're standing for the people of South Fulton. It is clear that an assault is on the people of South Fulton. And so we are asking the accountability for cities and municipalities in Georgia. And we are declaring a public policy resolution for the city of South Fulton, Georgia. My name's Al Bartel. I'm a public policy leader for urban, suburban, and rural communities, and particularly cities in the state of Georgia. This declaration of public policy reads as follows. Whereas, the Georgia Municipal Association, created in 1933 as the only state organization that represents municipal governments with a mission to anticipate and influence the forces shaping Georgia cities, and whereas the general welfare of the citizens of South Fulton, as designated in the Georgia Constitution, Article One, Section Two, Point One, sets forth that all government of right originates with the people. It is founded upon their will and is instituted solely for the good of the whole, and whereas the good of the whole is threatened with administrative malicious intent by virtue of majority vote of the council upon the existing mayor. And whereas the good of the whole is threatened with vengeance of jurisprudence by virtue of majority vote of the council on the existing mayor. And whereas the good of the whole is threatened with public vigilante consequences by virtue of majority vote of the council upon the existing mayor. And whereas the good of the whole is threatened with domicile of hostile environment by virtue of majority vote of the council upon the existing mayor. And whereas the good of the whole in the Georgia Constitution that originates with the people, the people have found that their will of majority for vote, they have found no ill will upon this mayor, and shall stand against all the aforementioned issues in this declaration of public policy to the Georgia Municipal Association. Therefore, the Municipal Association shall relegate the public policy municipal accountability of the state to ensure immediate resolution of constitutional remedy to the good of the whole herein known as the people with all deliberate intent, speed, and resolute commitment. As such, upon this day, we, the people, submit this communication for the forbearance of the council against this mayor and has taken actions that is against the will of the people of the city of South Fulton. It is our communication that we stand and communicate this to the entire public, that this shall not pass as an act upon the people from the city council. That is our communication to the public at large, the government at large, and more importantly, the people of the city of South Fulton.
Today, we gather here in South Fulton. I am the president and first lady of Street Groomers. We have been getting calls from the city of South Fulton that there was bullying, retaliation, and a lot of other things going on here in this community. We stand with the community today, some that could not make it due to different situations, some just scared to even be out here. Everyone out here today, that even some that stands with us, are going to be discussing and talking about the different things that's going on in the city of South Fulton. How they will not continue to take the abuse, take the attacks, take the retaliation. We are a voice for the voiceless. A lot of you know us around Georgia, and we come to fight, we come to stand, we come to let it be known that we will not take the abuse. We are tired of being tired. There are so many things that's going on around here that they can be addressing. One, I hold here a police report for Helen. Helen Willis Wallace, one of our city council members, that the police report has been just brushed up under a rug and disappeared. But I stand with here today with it in my hand so that you can investigate this police report that was given to Helen back in 2017. On 5/23/2017, she was issued a police foul, there was a foul, a police report filed on her for an assault that we have not seen recognition to or any kind of consequences that's being held. And by law, that is a law being broken towards our citizens that we need to be addressed. We have a lot of elders here that have been bullied by our city officials, and it's time for our city officials to understand that bullying is gang banging. Right now, we have some political gang bangers that we need to be held accountable. If these were gang members in the street, they would be charged with racketeering for organizing crime. And we feel as though there should be no different consequences towards but for them to have the same consequences. So we stand here today asking for some things to be done. So justice for South Fulton. The next person that we will have come up today is Rashad.
Right here?
All right.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Rashad Snellings. I moved to the city of South Fulton back in 2016, and I'm here just to give everybody an overview of the things that's been happening over the last two years. Nearly every single council meeting we've sat through seems to be an exercise of chaos and discord. The council's brilliant fix, the so-called decorum ordinance. This piece of legislation insists that any breach of decorum is to be recognized by the mayor, followed by a vote of the city council on the matter. Yet, when the mayor rightfully called out a clear violation by outgoing councilwoman Helen Willis, what did we witness? A room filled with silent council members complicit in their inaction. In essence, they've emboldened her to indulge in these duty, I'm sorry, in these antics without consequences. Here's the irony. We have a law in place where the mayor is bound to enforce it, but he is paralyzed without their support. When he seeks their support, he's met with silence. This other show of disrespect violates the civility pledge promised that they, that the city council promised to uphold, so much so that the mayor had to walk out of a meeting because of their uncivilized behavior at, of this city council. Now, let's talk about Section 216 of the charter, which lays the grounds for removal from office provisions, one of which is the failure to expose corruption. Our mayor, from his tenure as a councilperson and now in his elevated role, has consistently exposed the rot in the system. Let us all travel back to July 2022, when Mayor Khalid fearlessly shed light on corruption seeping through the top tiers of the police department. The backlash from the city council was palpable, and it was immediate. Outgoing Councilman Reeves and his cohorts retaliated with a vengeance against the mayor for doing his job. They curbed the mayor's powers to preside over the meeting, barred him from the local option sales tax negotiations with mayors from neighboring cities, passed a vote of no confidence, sought to shame him publicly, and then had the audacity to flaunt their actions to the media. After residents obtained and released the Smyrna report, now, the city of Smyrna's police department, they did an investigation on our police department at the request of our former city manager. So after residents obtained and released the Smyrna report, Councilman Corey Reeves was forced to publicly apologize on record after the official reports from the investigators supported the mayor's assertions regarding corruption in our police department. Residents in his district demanded a public apology for his participation in the egregious, undeserved, and unwarranted public lashing of the people's mayor, who strives to make life better for all of us. The city council audaciously scrutinized the mayor's credit card over a mere $600 charge used to commemorate the city on its significant fifth year anniversary. This was money that was spent for the attire of two talented performing arts students as they showcased their talent alongside our mayor. Recognizing the scrutiny, the mayor, with a sense of propriety, voluntarily repaid the money. But let's flip the narrative for a moment. If we're pulling out ledgers, let's discuss the unchecked expenses that have eluded referral to the district attorney's office. Outgoing Councilman Corey Reeves, after the Georgia Municipal Association Conference last year, back in June of 2022, when we did the open records, the credit card statements revealed that he had two charges from hotel rooms across different hotel chains racking up over $2,500 in charges. The police department personnel collectively booked nine hotel rooms on the same date, amounting to over $1,100 in a single night, and also rather curiously purchased flowers. Then, there's outgoing councilmember Catherine Ral, whopping $1,100 charge. Councilwoman Williams' modest $137 charge, and the staggering near $3,000 charge by Councilman J.C. Sebastian, all after the Georgia Municipal Association Conference had already ended. When we dug deeper into these, into these disturbing issues, these hotel charges were incurred to attend a private funeral, not of an employee, not of a resident of the city, but of a relative of the outgoing councilmember Helen Zenobia Willis. We're looking at nearly $9,000 of taxpayer funds frivolously spent on attending a personal event, depleting, which depleted our city's police presence within our city, which some would argue made our city less safe. The audacity peaks when it was evident that the city had conveniently provided only the mayor's statements overshadowing the flagrant misuse of public funds. Now, remember that $13,000 that was squandered on promotional pamphlets for William Bill Edwards after his electoral defeat to Mayor Khalid? Never a referral to the DA's office for the misuse of public funds for that either. It is both infuriating and deeply troubling to see the blatant misuse of city funds, especially when it treads on the realm of illegality. The audacious decision to spend $13,000 on promotional material for William Bill Edwards wreaks a political maneuvering. These weren't just advertisements, they were political endorsements paid for with hard-earned money from city of South Fulton residents and its visitors. Let's be clear, using city funds for political publications is not just unethical, it is illegal. And the audacity to undertake such a move after Edwards had already been voted out of office by the voters is a slap in the face to every citizen demanding transparency, integrity, and legality from our representatives. This is not just a political misstep, it is a travesty against the very principles our democracy stands on. It is a disgraceful abuse of power and trust when an elected official like Councilman Corey Reeves exploits his position for personal gain. Utilizing his standing as a, as a councilman as bait, Reeves shamelessly funneled thousands of dollars into the coffers of his mold remediation company to unsuspecting local HOAs in his own district. Such blatant conflicts of interest not only undermine public confidence, but tarnish the very office that he holds. Residents deserve representation and representatives who will prioritize their well-being and uphold ethical standards, not those who view their roles as simply a means to line their pockets at the expense of those they vow to serve. Furthermore, it is a blatant attempt to silence dissenting voices. The city council amended the public comments rule conveniently following residents' rightful questioning of tax dollars using, used on the Bill Edwards flyers. Outgoing Councilwoman Catherine Ral argues that public comment sessions are too time-consuming. But here's the kicker. Before the amendment, we had 30 minutes for public comment. After the amendment, the time allotment remained consistent at 30 minutes. So what exactly changed here? This was a tactic of the city council to regulate by silencing what the city voters express. Remember the live chat on YouTube? They took that too. It's, it's high time that this council comes clean with its intentions to admit its indifference towards the very public they claim to represent. This city has erupted in fury, and rightfully so, over the brazen takeover of sanitation services, designed to exclude the very public it serves. When the residents' voice, voice were stifled during the sanitation takeover, it was Mayor Khalid, a lone beacon of representation, who heeded their calls. By using his veto power, he championed the will of the people. The council's unanimous vote to override his veto wasn't just a slap in the face to Mayor Khalid, it was a resounding act of betrayal of citizens of South Fulton. At the regular council meeting in May of this year, Councilwoman Helen Zenobia Willis attested to the fact that the council will unanimously override the mayor's vetoes, which was done because he actually listened to the people he represents. Now, let's put this all into perspective. She is vowing to overrule future vetoes prior to the veto even taking place. Then, to make matters even worse, Councilman J.C. Sebastian admonished the mayor in last week's work session for exercising his right as the mayor to veto bad decisions of the city council. Please note that recent vetoes revolved around council approval for the police department to spend from confiscated assets during, during a time where there are questions surrounding the validity of such confiscations. There is still an active GBI investigation into the city's handling of these confiscated asset cases. The recurring theme here is retaliation. From daring to be a voice for the people, Mayor Khalid faces unchecked reprisals from his colleagues, which sometimes spill over to employees that are employed by his office. Now, imagine working for the city, and then Councilwoman Helen Willis takes a letter out of your personnel file, and in a retaliatory move against the mayor, posts it on the social media site next door without any redactions. This, this comes, this comes after the former city manager filed a complaint against the city council for the same bad behavior that employees are experiencing today. Employees should never be a casualty of the discord between elected officials. Situations similar to this have contributed to that employee ending up in the hospital where she remained for nearly a week. I know this because, I know this to be true because I reached out to this employee after hearing of this situation to offer my support. City Hall employees live in dread, expressing support for the mayor's initiatives could cost them their jobs. I've, I've even found myself compelled to publicly apologize to the former city manager, forced out after a public character assassination led by Councilwoman Williams Brown, as well as Councilwoman Helen Willis. Willis's flippant remarks about exerting force resonate disturbingly with the tragic demise of George Floyd. Williams even joked flippantly about, about those same very remarks at a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Economic Development Office while the former city manager stood there present. The former city manager's written concerns were met with a forced exit. Our employees don't just need protection, they need deliverance from this tyrannical city council. The audacious actions of this city council tragically made up of people of color who ought to know better are a reprehensible echo of the darkest days of the Jim Crow era. It's maddening to see that after our people have endured the raw brutality of lynching, systemic racism, and countless indignities, our seven city council members are now enacting policies that serve to marginalize, silence, and disempower. How can councilmembers who are now enacting policies that serve, I'm sorry, how can, how can individuals aware of our own ancestors torment so blatantly betray the shared legacy of our history? The council's efforts to suppress our, suppress our voices of the very community that they just raised their own salaries to represent is not just undemocratic, it's a slap in the face to the generations that fought so fiercely for our rights. Regardless of how you feel about the creation of this city, this is an act of betrayal to those who fought so hard for this city and those legislators who put their name on the line to vote for this city. The staggering incompetence on display by this city council is glaring. As residents, we simply cannot ignore the mounting job vacancies in City Hall. We should be asking ourselves, what on earth is happening that our city is bleeding employees at such a distressing rate? Within the last 10 days, we have lost 10 high, high, high level, management officials that just left the city. In this cesspool of mismanagement in February, we witnessed the audacious spectacle of two reckless councilmembers holding a press conference peddling wild conspiracy theories and groundless opinions, I'm sorry, baseless opinions about the former finance director. When the purchasing manner, when the purchasing manager valiantly stepped up with documentation highlighting the corruption, how was he repaid? A swift retaliatory firing. The tragic irony of it all is that the former finance director, after being forced to dismiss the purchasing manager, found herself ousted as well. Amidst all the chaos, hundreds of employees left, were left stranded without a paycheck. Instead of taking responsibility for what happened, the city shamelessly pointed the finger at the payroll processing company, ADP. As workers grapple with wondering if they will be paid, we, we must ask about our CFO, whose very capacity to make financial decisions remains murky at best. It seems as though every day, another resignation, another vacancy. Residents all over the city are asking the question, besides the mayor, who fought for the salary increase of our lowest-paid employees, is there anyone thinking about our beleaguered staff? While the city council finally did the right thing and increased the salaries, who is ensuring the safety and the welfare of the staff in the workplace? The council, in their egotistical bubble, revels in taking credit for every accomplishment, conveniently ignoring the tireless efforts of the real workers behind the scenes. As election campaigns kick off, brace yourselves for a parade of self-congratulating councilmembers hogging the limelight that rightly belong to the diligent staff. An example that comes to mind is when outgoing councilperson Helen Zenobia Willis voted no to the mayor's legislation to increase wages to $20 an hour, and then shortly before qualifying is set to begin, she changed her vote and goes on the news politicking about how great the mayor's legislation is. It should be duly noted that she is the recipient of multiple employee and citizen complaints and lawsuits. To all, to all of our dedicated employees at City Hall, know that all of us stand with you, that our prayers are, our prayers and support are unwavering, especially in the upcoming November elections. We've heard the slanderous comments made on July 11th dismissing you all as incompetent. Just know that your work is valued, and you, and you are valued as well, and should the need arise, we will be right there with you, ready to call these officials to account. At this time, I'd like to introduce District Seven resident Shawanda Clark to talk about the retaliation she experienced when she posted an open records document on social media. Thank you.
Good day. I am Shawanda Clark. I am a resident of District Seven. Helen Willis put out a cease and desist on me, and it has Attorney Wiens, Attorney Wiens' name on here, because I posted something from open records. The police department was paid to escort her to her mother's funeral. So what Helen does, she sends me a cease and desist. Who would do that? It was open record. It was open to the public to see. Helen is a bully, and I'm tired of being bullying.
Hi, I'm Rodrick Farwahimi. Many know me as Ty. I moved to District Three of the city of South Fulton back in 2020, to at the time what I thought was a beautiful thing, predominantly black city led by mostly black officials, including the police department. But anyway, my story, my situation, I was, I was shot twice in my home about a year and a half ago by a woman I knew. And I never did anything to her other than restrain her after hitting me. And I was charged and arrested. And the woman that shot me was not charged at all. She went home to be with her family. And after going through time in the hospital and then actually time in jail for three days, I started contacting some officials, like starting with the police department. I reached out to the supervisor of the detective that, that handled my case, the chief of police, internal affairs, and some other lieutenants and majors in that department, and all, like, pretty much ignored me and pretty much told me that they can't do anything about it. So after all that, I, I reached out to the Helen, Helen Willis from District Three, that's the district I live in, and she ignored me. After two months, I spoke to her again, and she finally answered me and told me that she could not do anything about it. She doesn't handle anything, and that after I actually seen a video of her telling us on Facebook that she was gonna start holding, that she was gonna hold officers accountable here in the city of South Fulton. And I mentioned that to her, and she pretty much told me that there was nothing she can do. She didn't even acknowledge that I told her that, or that she was in the video saying the same thing. So, either way, she was unhelpful, she's not here for, for the people, she's not for the people. As far as I know, as far as I can see from what I've seen from her, I have screenshots of everything that I'm telling you about when it comes to her. Just like I have screenshots of emails that I got from some people in the department, and including the chief of police, who is slandering me, telling people that I'm a woman beater. Oh, and also not to mention, I was also charged for animal cruelty. Not sure where that even came from, they telling me they had video of me abusing a dog. But for some reason, my dog is still with me in my home. I thought when something like that happens, they come and take them from you. So obviously, there's, they're not doing their job like they're supposed to, or whatever. But anyway, that's pretty much it, and...
You're here with you.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jill Lindsay. I'm one of the community leaders here on Old National Corridor. And in closing, I just want to say that it's time for all the citizens of the city of South Fulton to show up and show out. They're using your tax dollars in ways that you don't even have a clue. They're asking for raises, they're asking for things that you just need to come out and be aware of, how your tax dollars are being spent. We asked for a forensic audit when we got the new mayor. They still have not given us that forensic audit. That will show transparency regarding everything that we're concerned about regarding our tax dollars. You have tax dollars that are going to areas that we don't even know where they're going. We want a full investigation in every department for every budget regarding tax dollars. And the city manager are, should be held accountable to make sure that happens with council. Council should not be dictating to city, to city managers what they want to be done. We, as the taxpayers, are the ones that are responsible for making our councilpeople accountable. We have seven council seats, and we need our people in every district. We have seven council seats, and we need our people in every district to come out and say enough is enough. How many times or how many incidents we gotta have before the people in our community become concerned about what's going on with our tax dollars? Our tax bills came out, we didn't even have a meeting about it. So they're investigating that. We got a trash bill that we have to pay for as well. And we have no discount for our seniors. So in advance, so my thing is this, we got an election coming up, November the 7th, 2023, we need all our citizens in every district to show up and support the people that are running for these seats. Take your time, go out and see who these people are, how they're gonna serve you, because at the end of the day, everybody on that council works for you. And if they don't work for you, they should be fired. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Calvin Bennett, I live in District 5, and I just wanted to say, a lot of us has been here for some time, that even fought for this area to become a city. Understood in the beginning that we would have to fight against the powers that be that was already in power when we became a city. We didn't get good representation from Fulton County when we were unincorporated, and we're not getting good representation now while we're incorporated as a city. I'm just gonna reiterate what Jill just said, which is the gist of what I'm about to talk about. You need to come out and vote. You need to come out and vote in November, and just like she said, I'm gonna reiterate it, get involved in the campaign process, the election process, get to know some of us who's running for office, and start making a decision on who you gonna put in there. Because we need to make a change. We have to make a change. And if we don't make a change, we gonna get just what we deserve.
Well, I mean, it's pretty much what Jill and my man Calvin said, we gotta make a change. This has been a new city, but it's not new anymore, especially when we have old people that are in office that's not building the city up to be new and polished. So we need new people in office, the people definitely gotta come out. It's power in the people, it's power to the people. These people work for us, as Jill said. We have to know who's working for us and what they're doing, their platform and everything else. If we are not knowledgeable of who's in office in order to make these different laws and these different things for our city, then that's falling on us. Just like we are out here today, as all of us stand here side by side, shoulder to shoulder, we need more people to do and come out and do the same. We have to encourage people to come out, we need y'all to come out because if not, they're gonna sit in old seats and they're gonna make the decisions for us because we're not at the table or nowhere near to raise our hand or say anything about anything that's going on. And if we're not there, they're gonna think that we don't care. So us here right now, we care, and we need more people to care. And I know they care about this city like we do. Let's make South Fulton great again.
He wanted to just clear some stuff up real quick.
Yeah, actually, I made a mistake earlier, I actually moved here in 2020, and my thing was, as far as the police report and my situation, there were many lies and false statements in the police report from the detective, whose name is Erica Allen, Detective Erica Allen of the City of South Fulton. I reached out to her supervisor first and chief of police, and I told him about all the stuff that's in the police report that's like false. I have video footage to show that everything in the police report, or everything that I'm speaking of in the police report, is false. And I've sent videos a bunch of times to everyone in that department, plus people outside of the department, other city officials. No one has turned their ear towards me to hear me out, or whatever, they just keep pushing me away. Excuse me, I just wanted to add most of that and how I was charged with aggravated assault strangulation. This woman shot me twice in my home, being a minute apart, nearly a minute apart both shots. And there are 911 recordings stating that you can hear her in the background saying that I will shoot you in the head, I will blow your head off, me and my nephew, who was the only person in the home with me at the time besides the woman that shot me. My nephew, the only witness, his whole statement was left out of the police report. For some reason, the detective did not want to put that in there, when his statement would have incriminated the woman that shot me. But she didn't. And then she lied about how the gun fell out of her purse while I was strangling her. The video clearly shows she just went to her purse and just grabbed her gun and shot me when I was walking, was getting away from her. You know, it's pretty obvious. Everyone that has seen the video was wondering how could this happen? It's not just me, I know it's not just me. That's why I'm here, because I'm here with people that actually believe in me and believe my story, because they know what's going on. You know what I'm saying? Only one in the police, everyone in the police department, of course, has a different opinion, and I know why, because they know someone in that department messed up, and they're just sticking by that person because they don't want to be seen as whoever they would be, if everyone see what's going on. So that's really why I'm here right now, to show that part. But like I was saying, I reached out to everyone in that department after not getting nowhere. I reached out to my councilwoman in my district, which is Helen Willis, and she pretty much was messy with me throughout, excuse me, the messaging, you know, messaging back and forth, or whatever, and she was no help. And that's very disappointing because I actually voted for her. I actually voted for her right after I moved here. And like I said, it's disappointing big time. So I'm just saying, yeah, we do need to get out there and vote and make change, and make the City of South Fulton great again like I thought it was before I actually moved here.
My name is Dorothy Brooks, and I am a longtime resident of South Hills. I moved... Well, I thought I was talking loud anyway. But anyway...
Say your name.
Okay. Again, my name is Dorothy Brooks, and I'm a longtime resident of South Fulton. I moved in the South Hills area in the year 2004, and I just want to say that I started out trying to be a part of the community. This is my first time at a meeting in years, because I saw maybe eight... Jill, you probably know the last time you saw me, because I just lost confidence. What are these people doing? No, anything you ask never gets done. I don't even know the police now. I knew Cotton Tooks and a couple others, and the only reason I remember her name is because she was always telling me to call the police. What if you call the police, the police don't come? I've been complaining about this corridor here, that businesses along the way, why can't they clean up their place? Because when I don't take care of my yard and my space, then I get a letter from the homeowners association. But you can, I mean, you can just look at the trash. And then at the service stations, that I've complained about, these shell stations where people litter, sell drugs, and do whatever, that kind of thing, cars in my community, I think it was yesterday, I was in South Hills, and cars are speeding. We have no control, we don't, nobody's watching us, and certainly nobody's watching them. So I feel we need to find a way, and maybe I'll come back to the meeting, but I gave up. But I tell you, sometime I get sick to my stomach and think, we got the most incompetent group of people. I don't have no confidence in none of them in the City of South Fulton, I don't see nothing they do. You can't, if you go to the offices, nobody's there. These people just sitting at home doing whatever they do, getting a check on our tax dollars. Them tax dollars, $4,000 for taxes, and we getting no services. You can call the police right now, and they won't even come here. So I'm fed up, and a lot of what other people have said is the truth. I want to say one last thing.
Say your name.
Dorothy Brooks, I want to say one last thing. I was backing out of my driveway, five miles an hour, a young lady come through speeding and hit me. Well, I'm backing up, so technically you are wrong, but you shouldn't be speeding in a 25 mile zone. So I had to pay the City of South Fulton $400 because I'm easing out of my driveway. So all these things, it's so much, and I have not been on the bandwagon, but if we get weak and start, people start, I will come back out, and I will have more to say. This is a mess. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah.